All right, good afternoon, everyone. It is Monday, February 7 at 5:30 PM. And this is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting. Notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings, and asked our superintendent to confirm that this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please join me as we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next agenda item is the approval of tonight's agenda, which was posted in advance. I would move for approval of the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to approve the agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Great, the motion carries. Thank you. We're on to our student reports, and we have our two representatives here, Alexis Gugliotti from East and Raymond Spores from West. And Alexis, if you cared to come forward, we'd love to hear the, an update as to what's going on in East. Good evening and welcome.
All right. As you guys know, I'm Alexis Gugliotti, and I'm a senior at East High School. Since the last board meeting, there have been many things going on within the student body. For athletics, East Dance went to state this weekend and placed sixth, only .1 points away from fifth place. Both the East Boys and East Girls Basketball Teams played West on Friday. Our girls played a great game and won 53 to 42. These games helped Friends Incorporated, which is a domestic violence shelter in West Bend, by raising money through donations. Jan Lancer, a part of our dive team, broke the conference record with a score of 677.40. The Ice Bears, our co-op boys hockey team, beat Homestead this weekend, securing their number-one spot for conference and also going undefeated in conference. Wrestling was also busy finishing out their conference season, placing third in the Northshore Conference Tournament this weekend. Izzy DeGroot, an East senior, is competing in the Mozart Cup 2022 held in Austria. Good luck to her. Spring sports sign-up are on Wednesday this week. Not only have our sports been busy working hard, but so have our clubs. The musical production this year is Shrek. They will be performing on the 18th, 19th, and 20th of February. Student Council is also busy preparing for the winter formal that is coming up in March. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the update. And we invite Raymond Spores from West. Good evening.
Good evening. So, in addition to everything Alexis said, this month has also been an exciting time for West High School. Zach Koenig, a junior at West, just earned a 36 on the ACT, so that's really exciting. Congratulations to Zach. Another Spartan, Courtney Rumel, competed at the Beijing Olympics in the snowboard snowmobile competition this week. And on February 13, she will also be competing in the Big Air at 7:30, so anyone wants to tune in and watch that. In addition to Izzy DeGroot competing in Austria for figure skating, also West sophomore Hannah Andrews competed with her as a member of the Fond de L'Arc Blades synchronized figure skating team, so that's really exciting for them. The West Bend West Dance Team also competed at the state dance competition this weekend and took sixth place in Palm. And West junior Rachel Hopper also made the all-state team with her solo, so that's awesome. The West Bend High School Chess Team competed this past weekend at the Thomas Jefferson Tournament in Port Washington. Our team brought home the second-place team trophy, and Aaron Ruplinger won the third-place individual trophy as well. Finally, West volleyball players Isabel Sternig and Rory Griffin signed letters of intent this month to play volleyball in college at Concordia and Wisconsin Lutheran, respectively. Thank you.
Great, thank you for the update. We appreciate everything you do to keep us connected. All right. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda, and I've got seven participant comment cards, so I'll call them in the order that I receive them. But I'll start by reading Board Policy 187. We've come to the public participation portion of our agenda. Board Policy 187 prescribes the nature and procedures for this segment. I summarize the policy at this time, but copies of the policy are available in the back of the room, and I urge you to familiarize yourself with the policy in its entirety. Residents of the district, parents of children in district schools, and employees of the district may participate. Participants desiring to address the board should obtain and complete a public, a participant comment card near the entry and turn it over to the president prior to the meeting or when allowed by the president. Participants may comment concerning an agenda item or a non-agenda item. Each participant will be called to the podium and given three minutes to speak. The participant must state his or her name, address, and relation to the district. This information will appear in the minutes of the meeting. The board will not engage in debate concerning the remarks or take immediate action. The board may refer the matter to the superintendent, a committee, or take the remarks into consideration in future action. Board Policy 872 provides a formal process for citizen complaints, and Board Policy 520 provides a formal process for employee complaints. The board recommends use of these procedures as a guarantee, a fair and timely response. So, I will invite the participants forward to speak. We've provided a visible timer to help manage your time, and also I'll alert as to who's on, who's on deck and who will be up next. And I'd ask that to help the, that the participants are heard, that the meeting runs efficiently. Please refrain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after the public participation comments, so we can ensure a fair process. So, I will begin. First up is Mr. Monty Schmiggy, and Mr. Cameron Merkel will be on deck. Mr. Schmiggy, welcome. If you could state your, your name and also your relationship to the district, I have your address here on the card, so.
I'm Monty Schmiggy. I live in West Bend. West Bend resident. I will be emailing our, yes, I will be emailing my full statement to the board members, but it's also going to be distributed in paper this, later this evening. The district is considering new teaching and learning resources for Social Studies 5 to 8, and may choose a specific resource in March. I commend the district for requiring the vendors to make resources available to the public for, for viewing. I commend the district for making these materials available at the public library and online. I commend the curriculum committee for receiving feedback and delaying a choice for a time to review the feedback that was received. A website where people reviewed 28 similar K-8 California resources in 2017 rated three resources "good" for grades 7 through 8, and none of those were the publishers under consideration. History is a story and is always biased by selection of what is and was not included, and to what extent. Elementary school materials are biased because they must be condensed, and they must be age-appropriate. Dr. Reese has written that teachers build lessons from the McGraw-Hill resource, and they can choose what is or is not included, although they can't edit the basic resource. Maybe it's possible for better resources beyond the big three. I suggest looking at coreknowledge.org. Nothing stands in the way of making curriculum transparent. Most of the reviewed, of the reviewed resources are online and presumably available for viewing by parents. But parents are busy. That should not be the only solution. I ask that the resources be made available to the public again until board, the board makes a decision. It would also be nice to know which resource the administration favors and what might be used from the resource for that, for the particular grades, so we can narrow our review. By the way, it appears that the required 9th-grade U.S. History course covers the same period of time as the 8th-grade U.S. History course, and there is no required World History in high school. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments. All right, we invite Cameron Merkel forward, and on deck is Lauren Bailey. Mr. Merkel, good evening. If you could state your name and your relationship to the district, we have your address on, on file here.
Okay. I'm Cameron Merkel, and I'm a student at West Bend West. Good evening. I'm happy to report that maintenance has been working hard on the heating in the high school. Temperatures in all classes have been returning to mostly normal temps. However, towards the end of last week, some of the temps had begun to fall as low as 59 degrees in one class and 64 degrees in another class. I do believe that all classrooms should have temperature gauges in order to properly monitor and report irregular classroom temperatures. I also believe we should be following OSHA's recommendation of a temperature between 68 and 70 degrees in a room. If there's a different range that the board would like to have, then there should probably be a committee to look into that sort of thing. And I would like to thank you for making this a top priority, because they've really been doing a lot of good work, and I appreciate that. And in regards to the exam schedules I spoke about last meeting, a possibility to alter the school's schedule should be to accommodate all exam schedules would be to move the school days by one. So instead of having exams on the first, second, and third day of June, you should, you could have them on the last, on, for the last day. So 6th and 7th periods would be on the 6th of June. And this would also bump the teacher's last workday to the 8th, and that's just an idea, but it's something that should be looked into if we need to move and have an extra day. And also, we talked about student behavior last meeting, and I know Nancy, you brought up the thought of expulsion and how we should be a little harder on students that are out of line, and I think that is something that I can agree with. I've, have, I have seen numerous instances of students wandering the halls for no apparent reason. Hypothetically, if there is a student that simply does not care about their grades and hasn't for the past year or so, let's say that student also has offenses on their record of going to suspension or the office or what have you, I think that should be looked into. There have been plenty of times when some of these students only cause trouble for hard-working students. This is something that is not benefiting the school at all. After looking at West Bend West's report card on Friday, it is clear to me that our report cards scores through the DPI are going down. Maybe it is time for a measure to be taken such as expulsion. To me, our current behavioral methods are not on the right track. I would also like to inform you that expelling a student does not affect the DPI report card and, in any way, and I would like to thank you for looking into that more. And another topic that just came to my attention this morning, actually, was a private task force that business leaders in West Bend had presented their findings on October 14 in 2019. Now, I know you were not the superintendent during that time, but I just wanted this to be aware and made to everyone, that it was a presentation on a 25-year facility and maintenance plan that we should definitely look into again, because I believe it was just swept under the rug a little bit. But it was right before COVID, so I do understand, but that should still not be an excuse, so we need to pursue that, and we need to look, because they also presented correcting certain problems, and they offered a bunch of suggestions, as well as statistics. Now, the statistics are almost three years old now, but that is definitely something that should be updated, and we should look into that more. And that's all I have, so thank you for your time.
Thank you for yours. Thank you. All right, we invite Lauren Bailey forward, and Marietta, Marietta Bailey is on deck. Lauren, welcome. If you could, for the record, state your name and relation to the district, we've got your address on file here.
Lauren Bailey, and parent and now grandparent of the district, and thank you for putting me after this young man. He's very tough act to follow. So I'll speak on a few different subjects. Looking over the social study curriculum, and one thing that came up very clear to me, our First Amendment is one of our most cherished, maybe that's why it's number one, and that freedom of religion that is in there, we cling to. What I'm concerned about in, in, in expressing our religion, and many people talk about, let's bring religion back into our public schools, well, watch that a little bit. I'm concerned that some of these items, as they are written, will serve to harm faith. I say, how can that be? I think some of it is offensive to God, and it minimizes what God's really about. For example, the mention that Jesus was crucified is in there. Doesn't really say much, it's a little later and harder to find, from what I could discern, that he, that he was resurrected. But no reason as to why, or what possible significance that would have, and to a Christian, that's all the significance that there is. There's no mention that, that the teaching of Christianity has, at its root, salvation through what Jesus did for us. And so I say, if we're gonna leave that out, why even mention that he was a guy, a teacher, who like walked up and down, you know, the streets of Galilee preaching? That doesn't do much for us. We have a lot of teachers. Further, I would say the work of Luther was quite understated and diminished. Now, again, I saw the parts that meant something to me. What would my Catholic friends have to say, my Jewish friends, and so on, other religions? I just don't think we're doing a good job here. You know, the best way, I think, to defeat faith in our country, and there is an attack on that, I know most of us don't partake in that or feel like we are, but there is an attack on our faith. The best way to attack it is not to outwardly shoot darts at it and say how bad it is and how foolish you are. No, it's to undermine that faith and that belief and diminish the value in what Jesus and what our God has done for us. Take away its consequences and turn God into just an old wise guy like the Dalai Lama. That is not what we should be doing in our, in our schools, and for that reason, I say we should leave that out. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we invite Marietta Bailey to the stand, to the stand, pardon me, that's Old Habits Die Hard is an attorney. Marietta, welcome to the podium. And Bill Schultz will be next. Marietta, please, welcome. And if you could state for your, for the record here, the, your name and your relation to the district, we have your address on file.
I'm Marietta Bailey. I work for the district, and I have grandchildren. I am concerned about the obvious bias in these U.S. History curriculums you are looking at and how they portray the 45th President Donald J. Trump. The slanted description of him is unbelievable, rude, sarcastic, con artist, and bully. He is accused of Russian collusion, and the actual facts of what he did for this country are barely even noted. Under President Trump, America came first. He upheld our rights under the Constitution and didn't conspire with Big Tech to censor our speech and take away our First Amendment rights, which is what Joe Biden and the Democrats are now doing. He didn't mandate and try to force us to inject a molecule into our body. Our borders were safer, global terrorists were destroyed, he achieved historic peace deals in the Middle East, and America was energy-independent for the first time in 75 years. He kept his campaign promise of renegotiating NAFTA, which delivered a historic win for the American people. The U.S. MCA created hundreds of thousands of new jobs, protected American workers, and raised wages. Opportunities for women and minorities expanded in our workforce. Our economy soared and unemployment shrunk under President Trump's leadership. Our nation was respected and no longer taken advantage of. In regard to trade, our allies were doing their fair share globally. President Trump wasn't perfect, but he was perfect for America. He loved America and believed in capitalism, not socialism. He was elected by 63 million Americans to fix the problems created by career politicians who were wrecking America. Even with all the obstruction from the Democrats, he accomplished quite a bit. America was stronger than it had ever been. Shouldn't all these facts be in the history books? Isn't history factual? Shouldn't our students be told the truth and not what liberals and the biased media want them to believe? In these curriculums, January 6 is being portrayed as an insurrection and that it was the fault of President Trump. The Democrats are saying he incited the violence in the Capitol. President Trump's real words on Wednesday, January 6, "Marching over to the Capitol, building to peacefully and patriotically make your voices heard." This curriculum and anyone saying Trump incited violence is a liar, and actually inciting dishonest division. The incitement of division comes from the media, Democrats, and Team Biden, spreading all their venomous lies to America, convincing people that Trump advocated for violence, was a horrible president, and colluded with Russia to win the 2016 election. This is being repeated in these curriculums. I and 79 million Americans supported and voted for Donald Trump in 2020, and we want an unbiased, actual history about him taught to our children and grandchildren. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we invite Bill Schultz to the podium, and then Jody Geenan is on deck. Welcome, Mr. Schultz. If you could, for the record, state your name and your relation to the district, we have your address on file.
Yes, my name is Bill Schultz. I'm a father of a 4th grade student at Jackson Elementary. I'm here tonight, again, to discuss the recent changes in the ever-so-changing COVID-19 mitigation policy. Shocking, I know, guys, me talking about COVID, who would've thought? I was looking over the new mitigation policy, and it still just doesn't make any sense to me. Really hasn't since the beginning of the school year. All around the world, life is returning to normal more rapidly, and many other countries, as it will for some more others, come March 1st. Over 77,000 screaming, cheering, fist-bumping, high-fiving fans were allowed to pack in to the wonderful Lambeau Stadium, stadium, Lambeau Field, rather, like a bunch of sardines just a few weeks ago in the NFL Divisional Game. No talk, no proof of any spike in COVID-19 cases. I'm thankful the West Bend School District finally came to their senses and is now implementing a five-day forced quarantine rather than 10 days, as per the CDC recommendations. I don't understand why the policy states a child is required to wear a mask between day 5 and 10 after a positive test when the CDC advises differently. I don't understand why a child must stay home if they have an illness or any symptoms of an illness. I think I can speak for many people in this room, that when, I will say, when I was in school, a little cough, a little sneeze, a little sniffle didn't force us to stay home, like we're being fear-mogged into keeping our kids home from school nowadays. The only way I was allowed to stay home from school was if I was vomiting or had diarrhea. I don't understand why these times should be any different. None of what the West Bend School District has done all year regarding the handling of COVID-19 has made any sense at all. Masks don't work, forced quarantining doesn't work, even the vaccine doesn't work, guys. Someone, anybody, please make it make sense.
All right, thank you for your comments, and we invite Jody Geenan to the podium, and then Carol Hager is on deck. Jody, good evening. If you could state your name and your relation to the district, we have your address on file.
So, my name is Jody Geenan, and I'm a resident of West Bend and a taxpayer. And I, what, and I was happy to participate in reviewing the social studies resources for grades 5 through 8. I would like to thank the administration for inviting the public to review the resources from wherever, whenever it was most convenient, as it was offered online. Thank you. I am here to raise awareness that neither vendor's resources should be purchased for our school district. Savis was a strong no because of misinformation, bias, spelling errors, typos, and no close correspondence between the standards Savis recognizes and Wisconsin standards. McGraw-Hill had most of the same issues, but I will go through some particular examples found in McGraw-Hill. The introductory video regarding 6th through 8th grade American Revolution had CRT flavor. Words like "white males" and "property'd males" and a message to change the world sent up a red flag that there was a focus of making activists out of students. Then, under the biweekly updated current events of McGraw-Hill, out of the 10 sample stories provided, about 1/3 of them were on the promotion of vaccines. Who will have time to properly monitor the biweekly updates? Current events leave our students wide open for receiving questions and discussions, such as the one pertaining to George Floyd that led to riots in our high schools last fall, or the privilege test at Badger. Don't the students get enough current events through social media, television, and families? The most disturbing focus of the Human Rights resource is the push to, quote, "rise to the challenge, to make safeguarding human rights the work of the entire human race." In fact, we hope that reading this book will make you want to join in the revolution that we call Human Liberty 2.0, end of quotes. This is exploiting children in emotionally vulnerable adolescents while hijacking parental rights and authority for causes with which they may disagree. The majority of U.S. History propagandized pros of communism and socialism, but our administration managed to find one quote in the resource that provided the cons. By not making the cons clear throughout the resource, our students may fall prey to sympathizing with socialism and communism to the detriment of the future of our nation. Unit 177 of U.S. History encourages students to skip school in order to protest, like climate change, with Greta Thunberg leading the way. This reminds me of when our students were allowed to walk out of class to support gun control in relation to the Parkland, Florida shootings. Another concern includes the layers of integration of SEL and CRT that go along with the McGraw-Hill resources. Our school district spent months reviewing and revamping our SEL program. Was that all in vain? Overall, my recommendation would be to ditch both Savis and McGraw-Hill resources. It is not good enough to choose the lesser of two evils, even if we try to customize to improve the resources. Most important is providing truth-and-fact-based education to our students. We also need to focus on helping our students base, master basic academics instead of turning them into activists. Would you purchase a car for your children with faulty brakes, a rusty axle? Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Appreciate it. We invite Carol Hager to the podium, and Jen Thompson is our last speaker and is on deck. Good evening. If you could state your name for the, for the record and your relationship to the district, we have your address on file.
My name is Carol Hager, and I'm a resident of West Bend and a parent of a former student. I participated as well in the review of the 5th through 8th grade social studies resources that may be added to our district's curriculum. In particular, these were digital versions. They were not physical textbooks from two different companies, McGraw-Hill and Savis Pearson. Because there were two versions for each grade, that meant a total of eight resources needed to be reviewed. This was an incredible amount of pages, hundreds really, to read and analyze for each subject. The district has decided that 7th grade will be studying World History, and that is what I covered when I reviewed the books. I don't have enough time to list all the typos and errors and misinformation that I found in the two versions of World History, but I will give you a flavor of what I found, not to mention the liberal point of view that pervades both texts. On the Savis Learning Company website, Savis describes their materials as providing, quote, "access and equity for cultural responsive teaching." Remember that culturally responsive teaching is a code word for critical race theory. In the World History text by Savis, the Origins of Civilization chapter repeatedly uses the term "human ancestors," the implication that humans are descended from another species or another type of human or hominid that lived millions of years ago. Many scientists believe, I should say, quote, this comes from Savis, "Many scientists believe that the oldest humans began to develop or evolve from their great ape cousins about five to seven million years ago. This process is what's known as evolution," unquote. Why is this statement about evolution in a social studies text? In chapters about the Islamic world and the expansion of the Muslim world, the authors present positive aspects of Islamic society. Quote, "Under the Sharia, women and men had religious equality," unquote. I guess other types of equality seem to be left out of the narrative. Under McGraw-Hill World History, they also seem to be overly obsessed with presenting Islamic society in its best light. Chapter after chapter covered positive Muslim values, achievements, and tolerance for other religions and cultures. I do suppose 7th graders are not ready for the real truth and history of Islam, such as the definition of the word jihad and the suppression of women's rights. I hated the suggested activities called "take informed action" that occurred in virtually every chapter. These activities had very little relation to the lessons, especially when the activities encouraged students to organize, petition, and lobby for modern-day causes. Here are a couple examples of the errors from the McGraw-Hill text. For example, it was stated that the war that began in 1914, we all know that war, they say it was first called World War I, but later became known as the Great War. And I didn't get to talk about the Lutherans, as someone else did, but Martin Luther, according to legend, nailed 95 theses to the church door.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. And last, we have, we invite Jen Thompson to the podium, and if you could, please state your name and your relationship to the district, and we've got your address on file.
Okay. Jenny Thompson, and I'm a parent resident. So I wasn't planning on speaking, but then I was just remembering what the meeting, two weeks ago, we had the principals come and discuss some things, and I did write a few of you about our concerns that, you know, when I say "our," I just, I guess means my friends, people I've talked to, people that have contacted me. I think what, so the first time it was brought up, I think it was, it was you, Nancy, who said it was after the meeting with a bunch of the students that came from the high school, correct? And you said, I, you know, I think we need to have a bigger discussion with principals and racism and what's going on. And I think that's where this, that stemmed from, if I'm remembering correctly, on why we wanted to have the principals come, or, you know, you guys wanted to, to discuss that. I think it got discussed maybe for five seconds. I think at one point, someone asked Mr. Schloss about the discipline and what's been going on with the kids that were getting in trouble for these racist remarks, and I think that's the only time it was brought up. If at all possible, I guess the request would be to do it again, but let's have, you know, Lance Rel, let's, let's have Dave Ullman, John Graff, and then also have Mr. Schloss here again, and really, I think, really discuss what is going on in the schools when it comes to racism, because that, that little bit of time that was given to it, I think is kind of pathetic in the whole scheme of how important it is that this is going on. I've had kids through the schools, my daughter's in the high school, constantly is telling me about all the racist remarks she's hearing in the hallways. I worked at Silverbrook for five years. I know the racism is alive and well in those kids, in some of those kids in the schools. I dealt with it on a, on a weekly basis. My kids have gone through Badger, I know what's happening there, too. I think if we could- I think if we could have a more real discussion about it and try to have solutions, real solutions, talking about back and forth with the principals, you know, what's the discipline, like for Silverbrook, for Badger, for the high school. It was great hearing the elementary teachers speak, it's really, everything that they're doing is fantastic, and I think, you know, I think most people can agree with that, that in elementary school, this doesn't seem to be an issue, probably because of the rules and everything that they have for the children to follow, and I think it works really well. But I think it needs to be brought up again, and it needs to have more discussion and more of a spotlight brought on it. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, and that was our last participant, so thank you to those who came tonight to share your opinions, we appreciate it, we benefit from your perspectives. All right. Next on our agenda is our consent agenda, and the consent agenda consists of the minutes of the January 24, 2022 regular board meeting, dispersments posted February 7, 2022, revenues and expenses in the aggregate, July 2021 through January 2022. We have no certified staff contracts to ratify, one certified staff resignation, and two retirements. I would move to approve the consent agenda, would there be a second?
Second.
Thank you, Nancy, motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? All right, the motion carries, thank you. We're on to our reports, and first up is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer.
Thank you. We had some follow-up items from our last board meeting, just, I know it's in your preamble when you speak around public comments, but at that time, we generally can't engage in discussion, those kinds of things, but coming forward from the public comments portion last time, were two specific items for follow-up. Cameron spoke to them a little bit earlier today, pleased to hear the student perspective from that. But one of them was regarding heat at the high school. It is indeed an expectation that our classrooms would be in a range of 68 to 72 degrees during heating season, which goes all the way through May for us. And again, kind of that alert, we went into that high school the following day, found a couple of rooms had either dropped down into low 60s range, that kind of thing, we'll make sure and follow up on the comments that we heard this evening as far as a couple more rooms experiencing that. But again, that would be too cold by our standards as well. We made sure to engage in communication with our leaders, reinforce with our staff what that expectation was, the reporting mechanism, we have a ticket system that's monitored, we went back in and looked, we have approximately 200 staff members, we had six tickets around heat during that time period, three of which were open, there was a repair in progress. So we did look at that system and think, how can we do interim communication with our staff so that they knew there was an issue found? We also reiterated for our staff that by no means should you linger in a classroom in those conditions, whether it's heat, electricity, you know, kind of your foundational pieces that you would expect in a classroom, please relocate. If you aren't aware of where you can relocate in the building, ask a principal to assist you so that, again, you wouldn't be subject to those conditions. It's not a conducive environment for learning at all. So we went back into the ticket system, we closed out some of those, we had a severed coil that we found. When a ticket is closed, we then give a follow-up survey to that staff member who created it to make sure it was adequately resolved, they can also reengage in a ticket system. We worked with our leaders and our front office staff, too, you know, when we're in the middle of teaching and we're running a class, and, you know, you might notice something, maybe the ticket system's not available, we made it so that they could call into a front desk, someone would patch them support that they needed or help them relocate in that moment, should that arise. But again, we made sure to communicate that with all of our families, just so you can touch base at home around expectations, and don't be shy around letting us know if that learning environment isn't conducive to that. So that was the piece of the heat. We also talked a little bit last time around the different controls, so while each classroom has a control, there's certain air that comes out of the handlers itself, and then there's a nuance of ambient air in a classroom, where that thermostat's located, and then there were some temperatures taken on surface, exterior surfaces, so just navigating, placing auxiliary temperatures, thermostats, pieces in classrooms, kind of mid-range in a classroom or to the edge of the room to make sure, again, that ambient air wasn't measured just in one spot. So those are some of the pieces they've deployed, we'll, again, make sure, so if anyone's out there, if you've got a cold classroom, let your teacher know, let your principal know, let that front office know, because we'd want you to relocate, and we'd want to take care of that in a timely fashion. Any questions on the heat follow-up?
Would you like any historical perspective on the 2019 status?
On the status of?
Just the 25-year plan and how we'd had a failed referendum, which was set to address heating and other utility issues.
And you saw some of the capital improvements that Dave was able to speak to last time. We still have been working on the updates to that facility plan, so while COVID did provide a little interruption, his team has been updating all those assessments, that data, and we intend to bring that forward. We've kind of foreshadowed some community conversations to help us rebuild our continuous improvement plan and those metrics, and you'll see a dedicated section around facilities in there.
I think considering what a disruptor COVID has been, I think Dave has done an incredible job.
Yeah, they've been getting those pieces up to date, in fact, some new assessments to coincide with that, so we look forward to bringing that to the community, that would be part of a larger community conversation. The other piece for follow-up was a high school exam schedule, so that was a different schedule that was created for semester, we asked the principals to speak to that. They had solicited feedback, suggestions from their staff, then they also have a leadership team, and they have a Principal's Advisory Council with different representatives from all grades regarding that, just whatever's going on in their school, I think they have open agendas, those kinds of pieces. So they did talk about three options, they were shared, then they talked about kind of a plus minus for each, surveyed teachers again on a preferred schedule, and also talked about a culminating activity or a traditional exam structure that it created space for both of those options. Now, one of the things, given the feedback that we heard, was around making sure students know that they have multiple avenues for representation, who their representatives are on that Student Advisory Council, within their own student council, making sure that they were doing some direct communication with their students. We also discussed a follow-up survey while that kind of exam experience was fresh in their memory, so that they could use that to further inform any discussions that they have in the spring. I talked about that being timely, so that there was plenty of room to kind of talk about ideas, put those out there to get that kind of feedback well in advance before something was put in play. I know that we spoke about, they make that public to the teachers to look for overlap to make sure no student is overburdened with exams, so we just talked about making sure that that kind of piece was available for student review, too, so they can look at it from that perspective. So they'll be making sure students understand representation and concerns like temperature or their exam schedule, those kinds of things that they can bring forward through multiple avenues, so. Any questions on exam schedule or kind of their process as they go forward? COVID changes, we heard about that a little bit, too. We put that out Friday, that we are indeed inviting all students who are healthy back to school, reducing out any kind of quarantine, we put that out to families on Friday, and just noted that we'd be having that conversation, inviting any additional, you know, thoughts or clarity that was needed. We did add an illness section on there in the draft for last Friday, reiterating that, you know, your general illness guidelines include exactly what was heard tonight. Fever-free for 24 hours without using any fever-free medication, diarrhea or vomiting, again, 24 hours, you know, prior to that next time you come to school. And then we talked about uncontrollable coughing, that's where, you know, it's disrupting a whole classroom, it's uncontrolled, it's not like, oh, I have a cough, and that happens, it happens to all of us. So we tried to, because again, people are being overly cautious, we really tried to add that definition of what kind of illness are we talking about here? So really, it's restricting down, going with the five days for illness, whether you're tested or not, those kinds of things. And then we did make recommendation around face coverings, you know, through that day 10, but it's not required in certain cases, so we cleaned up all that. Now, we've been waiting for DHS has been foreshadowing kind of movement of this to fall into a category much like any other communicable disease, like lice would be, or whooping cough, something of that nature, which then completely makes another shift on contact tracing. We said we would continue to contact trace to the classroom level, we had been going in and kind of giving you that individualized contact tracing, so we'll do that to that level, we'll keep a dashboard up, so people who are interested in that information can see that. However, we anxiously await Public Health is having a committee meeting, I believe it's coming up on the 22nd, we expect kind of more direct guidance from them at that time. So we were hoping to have had it, but our meeting last Thursday, they just weren't ready with some of those, so we're preparing for that kind of shift and how it impacts schools. So are there any questions, concerns around the information?
I'm assuming, based on the adjustment on Friday, that our numbers do continue to drop.
Correct. So again, we anticipate not only our local numbers, but we're seeing that throughout the state, just as anticipated, we kind of took a steep climb up. Our staff absence, our student absence have been steadily declining. So again, if we mirror last year where we fall and we finish out, you know, with little to no illness, that would be wonderful, so we're all very optimistic about what we're seeing. Great, we'll make sure and communicate with families, anytime there's a change like that, I try and foreshadow it, let them know when we're speaking about it publicly, so if they had questions or needed clarity on something, they could do so, we'll make sure and send a message to families to affirm that change going in place. Anyone who might have been negatively impacted by a quarantine that we can pull back into school, we'll make those calls and get students or staff back in school as soon as possible. So, thank you for that. I would have highlighted the chess club, but one of the students stole my thunder, that's a newer club, so congratulations to our chess club. But also just a reminder that there's a West Bend High School art student exhibition at the West Bend Library, February 9 through the 28th. It begins with an opening night reception that's this week on the 9th, starting at 6:30 PM, it's in the downstairs reading room of the library, so hopefully you can get to the library, if you can't join us opening night, just make sure to stop in sometime during the month to admire the work of our local artists. Correct. Thank you.
All right. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer? Thank you for the report, we will move on to the Curriculum Committee report, and our chairperson, Erin Dove, will give us a report. Erin.
So we had a committee meeting this past Friday, we had discussion regarding the mythology anthology, I'll say that 10 times fast, and that's on our agenda later tonight. We had two items on our agenda, the Winter Star results and an early reading empowerment microcultural that we had the opportunity to review, and those will be presented to the full board at an upcoming meeting. We also reviewed the process for health curriculum and are redefining the process that is used for human growth and development for curriculum review, so those are all ongoing, and we will continue to see more on those items. And then, as you heard tonight a little bit about the 580 Social Studies resource, we began discussing it and got to kind of peek at some of the community feedback, but we need a little more time to continue looking at that, so that will stay in committee and we'll look at it again in March.
Great, any questions for Erin? All right, thank you for your report, and on to our Policy Committee report, Mr. Ongert.
Yep, Policy Committee met on January 25th, it was a nice, long meeting, but we got a lot done, a lot accomplished, took 600 series, 700 series, and there's talk of another Policy Committee meeting this Friday, as long as we can get our schedules to align, but it's looking likely that that will happen, we'll get that posted as soon as we get everybody's schedules in line. So I'll leave it at that, because we're going to talk about a lot of these policies later on in the meeting. I also wanted to say that, saw a bunch of emails today wondering if the board saw a lot of the community feedback from the Curriculum Committee, I can confirm that I saw every single feedback from people who submitted to different forums on Savis and on McGraw-Hill, so to anybody that was wondering if we saw all of it, I believe we did, because there was quite a bit of feedback that I reviewed over the weekend and again this afternoon, so just wanted to make that known.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Joel? All right, we'll move to our action items, and the first action item on our agenda is the Head Start Self-Assessment, and Jamie Malsum is going to walk us through that. Good evening, Jamie, welcome.
Good evening. President Zweigert, members of the Board, Superintendent Wimmer for giving me the opportunity to come and speak with you guys this evening. As you mentioned, I'm going to be talking about the Community and Self-Assessment process as well as the Bus Monitor waiver, so I'll get started with the assessment process first. Part of the Head Start requirement is an annual Community and Self-Assessment, is a prerequisite to the development of the Head Start goals and Training and Technical Assistance Plan. Those are the components that are required for our Head Start grant application, which I will bring to you guys next month, so. I prepared a very short presentation for you this evening to review some of the data found from the Community and Self-Assessment. There is a 70-page document that can be found in the Administrative section, if you'd like to dig into it a little bit deeper. All right. I'm just supposed to click, where did Tim go? Click? Or go up and down?
You can scroll in.
Scroll in, okay. All right. There we go. All right, for any new members, I'll just give a little bit of a background. The West Bend School District is a grantee for the Washington County Head Start Grant. It has been since 1978, so it's been about 44 years. Our Head Start program is governed by the West Bend School District School Board and our Policy Council. We are, the Washington County Head Start has to follow the Office of Head Start regulations as outlined in the performance standards. We have three locations, one is the Rolf's Education Center, right across the street. We also have a classroom at the Jackson Community Center and a 4K classroom at the Catamaran YMCA. We can serve up to 141 eligible students ages 3 to 5. All right, so a little bit of review about how this process kind of works. So the first step in the process is to review the progress towards our goals for this current school year. Step two, we review the Program Information Report, which is a look back at last year. Then we deploy the Community and Self-Assessment to our stakeholders, parents, community members, teachers, and our school board rep, Erin Dove, as well. From that assessment, we identify our program's strengths and areas of focus. And then the last piece of the puzzle is formulating our strategic plan and our goals for next year. I didn't bring my glasses.
There you go.
I was thinking I was just hitting a spacebar here. All right, so step one, the strategic goals for this school year. So the first step in the process, our current school year, our goals were focused on student and staff health and safety, pyramid model implementation, and co-teaching and collaboration, as well as language and literacy, and engaging our families during COVID times. All right, so the second step of this process, we review our progress towards the goals this year, so. Health and safety, I'm happy to report that thanks to the mitigation measures from the West Bend School District, we have closed minimal classrooms, I think. the West Bend School District, we have closed minimal classrooms, I think one maybe this year. Our pyramid model implementation piece, this is really exciting. At the same time last year, we had 73 behavior incident reports in our program. The same time this year, we have 28. So a significant reduction in challenging behavior in our classrooms. Co-teaching and collaboration, we've added additional co-taught classroom this year for special ed in our three-year-old, one of our three-year-old classrooms. Language and literacy, 67% of our Head Start students are meeting their grade level targets in language right now, mid-year. And 62% in literacy are meeting their grade level targets at the mid-year checkpoint right now. And as you can imagine, planning meaningful family events during a pandemic is challenging. I'm happy to report so far that we've started up our Triple P parenting classes for all of our Head Start families in collaboration with the Family Center of Washington County. All right. So step three is kind of the look back. So what did our data show from last year? And it showed us that all of our students have access to medical services. And 100% of our students last year had their well-child checkup by June 1st. That's huge for our program. I think that's the first time it's happened, so we're excited about that. All of our students have access to dental care and 94% of them had their wellness yearly dental checkup by June 1st last year. Forty-eight families received crisis intervention. And 22% of our Washington County Head Start students had an IEP last year. 12% speech and language and 10% SDD. All right. The fourth step in the process is looking at our current strengths in our program. I think we have a lot of them, so it's hard to narrow it down a little bit. But I think our programming options is one of them. We offer half-day and full-day options for our families. And our community partnerships that we have with Jackson Community Center and the YMCA offer enrichment for those students in those sites. All of our students in our program are serviced in the least restrictive environment, again with the co-taught teaching model, with our special ed teachers and our regular ed teachers. And pyramid model is also a strength in our program. We're a model program for pyramid model. WEM, which is the Wisconsin Association of Infants and Mental Health, often reach out to our program to seek advice when they're considering changes to the statewide implementation of pyramid model. So some of the things that the data showed us in the self-assessment, and we had a 24% response rate, the key takeaways, parents want more full-day options. They want continued emphasis on teaching friendship and regulation skills. A continued emphasis on kindergarten readiness as well as nutrition and active play. Expansion of more programs into the community partnerships, rebooting family engagement opportunities and continuing and enhancing our play-based learning instruction. All right, so areas of focus for next year pulled from all of that data, we know that we're going to look at increasing full-day options. We're going to, we're going to continue our pyramid model practices and implementation with an emphasis on practice-based coaching for our teachers. We're going to look at nutrition and exercise, create goals around family engagement, and find more ways to incorporate play-based and nature-based learning into our daily planning. All right, so that's the end of my report. What comes next? Enrollment is in full swing for our 4K. Virtual parent night had 60-plus participants this year. And we already have 140-plus students enrolled for 4K next year. With the online enrollment, that's a way that Head Start is kind of grabbing families that wouldn't otherwise know about our program. So. And then the Head Start strategic planning process. So all this data I put together, I look at, we look at our focus for next year, and then we work as a team to develop our goals and grant application. All right. Any questions?
Jamie, kudos on the reduction in behavior incidents. But could you put a little more context around it? We went from 73 to 28, was it? Last year to this year? What did our enrollment do? Are we about even or?
We've gained about, I would say, 12 or 13 students from last year to this year.
So about a 10% increase in enrollment? And we more than halved our behavior incidents?
Yes.
So mix of kids shifts a little bit, but pyramid model probably plays a role in that too?
It absolutely does. And I think our co-teaching collaboration model is a big part of that as well. We've been able to reduce our student-to-teacher ratio, our student-to-staff ratio in the classrooms. So the staff are able to be super responsive when challenging behavior does occur.
Great, thank you.
I have a question on behavior too, but this is maybe a more generic question. These are little people learning how to share and take turns. So what constitutes a behavior that is required to have an incident written about it?
That's a very good question. It can be anything from refusals to explosions, right? The idea behind the behavior incident report is looking for patterns. We want to look at when they're occurring, what happened before, what the response is to that behavior, because that helps us to formulate a plan and create interventions for that child. Does that?
Yeah, I mean.
I'm going to guess it's not like a one-time deal. It's something that you've tried to correct and then it just continues.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a question along the same lines. So was the pyramid model used last year, last time and this time? So the model hasn't changed, just the incident reporting has changed. So a cynical person couldn't say, oh, you're just reporting less. It's not necessarily reducing the incidences of bad behavior.
We've been in full implementation for pyramid model, I think, for 13 years.
That's great news. Thanks.
Thank you. It's exciting.
Is this something we can use at the high school?
We could try. I'm not quite sure. Not quite sure what those visuals would look like, but.
I remember last year participating in a outside evaluation of Head Start. Matt, I know you were part of that. Does that happen every year or is that a every five years? Do you know what I'm talking about?
Yep, so that happens on our grant cycle. So it's a five-year grant cycle. Next year will be in year five. Every year, there's a piece that they really dig in deep and look at. I believe, was that FA2? Yeah, that was a big one.
Yes.
We were supposed to participate in the class piece of it this year. But again, because of COVID, they're not bringing people into our school. The Office of Head Start doesn't. So yeah, thank you.
I'll move to accept and acknowledge the 2021-2022 Head Start Community Assessment Report and the 2021-2022 Head Start Self-Assessment Report.
I'll second.
Motion and second to accept and acknowledge the assessment reports. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. And I think you're going to walk us through the next agenda item, correct? Which is the Head Start Bus Monitor Waiver.
It is. So again, Head Start is, we have to follow lots of performance standards. And one of those standards states that we have to put a bus monitor on all of our vans and buses that transport students to and from school. So this is something that we've requested every year from the Office of Head Start, the requirement to waive the bus monitor. And the reason for that is, is funding and staff. So if we had to put a staff member on every one of our buses, it would significantly decrease the staff that we have in classrooms, which directly impacts the student growth and achievement.
And I think too, one of the pieces of the why that we're able to do that is the behavior that you noted before is so small that we're not experiencing issues in that environment so that we're able to do that with confidence.
Absolutely. And when a behavior, a challenging behavior does occur on a bus, we staff that temporarily to reteach and model some of those pieces for our students.
I have a question. Is there staff that helps the kids get on the bus and settled in their seats and then maybe steps off? So that, so there is, so it's just when the bus is moving that there's not that second adult other than the driver?
Absolutely.
So, and I think getting them settled in is probably the most important part.
Agreed.
Okay, so, thanks.
So is this bus setting like Head Start kids rolling with K4? Or is this totally dedicated to the Head Start program?
Well, this piece is particular to the Head Start program, but at some of our offsites, so at the Jackson Community Center and at the Y, the 4K kiddos do go on buses and transportation with the Head Start kids as well.
I'll move to approve the Head Start Bus Monitor Waiver for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve the Head Start Bus Monitor Waiver for the 2223 school year. Any final discussion? I'll just ask one follow-up question for Superintendent Wimmer. My understanding is this is a fairly common waiver, not just for our district. This is something that's, and we've seen this many prior years. Just wanted to put it in context.
Yeah, correct. What's unique for us is that we actually manage Head Start. A lot of times districts don't manage their own Head Start. That's a county-managed piece, so it's really nice to have it so aligned and integrated with our schools.
Thank you. All right, any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
All right. Then, let's see, our last action item relates to summer programs and Erin Faust will walk us through that. Good evening, Erin. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me again tonight. Two weeks ago, I shared the full presentation about the summer program. So tonight, I'm really here just to ask for the board to formally approve the program. I have not received any questions from community members regarding the program between the meeting last week and this evening. So if there's other questions that I can answer now, I'd be happy to do that. Otherwise, I would ask the board to approve the program.
Questions for Erin? Just maybe as a reminder to the community, if there are individual students that perhaps the parents think, oh, maybe they need some additional help in math or reading, this is a really great opportunity for them, correct?
This is a wonderful opportunity, and we are actually expanding the opportunity in that exact instance. So we will have for our kindergarten through seventh grade students, a full literacy and math option in the June slash early July session. And then we are also adding the new August two-week session for students to have sort of that get ready for school, get your frame of mind back to the academics. So that is also an opportunity this year. One of the other key pieces for the June session for our younger students is that they will now have the opportunity to take math literacy and an enrichment opportunity. Prior to this year, we did not have that opportunity. If they needed both math and literacy, that was all they could take. And just for some dates, some dates for everyone, the elementary program will run again from June 13th through July 7th. That's a Monday through Thursday program. The high school program will also run the in-person part of it from June 13th to July 15th. And then any students taking a virtual class will have from June 13th through July 29th to finish that course. And the August session is again August 1st through the 12th. Registration will be opening for high school students on March 7th and for our pre-K through seventh grade students on March 14th.
As a reminder, the cost to our parents?
Absolutely nothing.
Right.
It's also a great opportunity for some fun activities over the summer. My son, who's going to be a ninth grader, is excited to take a PE class through summer school. I think it's three or four hours a day in that timeframe that you talked about. He'll get credit for that and then won't have to take PE when he's in school in the fall. So he's got three or four of his buddies that are going to do that with him. And as a parent, he's a little too young for a job, but he's going to be able to, you know, take some classes, take a class over the summer. So great opportunity for fun things, the music camps and choir camps and all that stuff as well.
Yes, and the jump starts for all of our elementary, so our kindergartners going into their elementary school. We have that program as well offered in August.
Yeah, I think it's, it's been a tenant of this board to, you know, offer choice. And thank you for being creative and figuring out how do we give more options? Get that, that third session in there as well as, you know, the second installment in August. So thank you.
A motion to approve offering the summer school program in the summer of 2022 and welcome our students back.
I'll second.
Motion and second to approve offering the summer school program in the summer of 2022 as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Erin, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move to discussion items. And our first discussion item is a first reading of several policies that were reviewed by the policy committee. And Superintendent Wimmer is going to walk us through that. And again, this is a first reading.
Correct, it's a first reading, the policy committee. Our schedules did align. We'll be meeting for follow-up this Friday. So just eager to hear feedback. There was a few we wanted to dig in. Certainly, we had been foreshadowing and board members, the full board had been reviewing this set of series prior, that committee meeting. Committee meetings are now streamed live as well as provided recordings. So I know that you tune into those too. One of the first things we did was revisit 187, public participation at board meetings. We've, we've kind of created our script. You heard Chris say it tonight. We made sure to have a visual timer at board meetings. We talked about kind of alerting that next person on deck to help run efficient and effective meetings. We had discussions that it's a great time to look at that policy when you don't need to, just to make sure it's meeting your needs. But you'll see a highlight just adding to help ensure all participants are heard and the meeting runs efficiently. Please abstain from conversation, comment, or applause during or after public participation comments. We've been really good about expanding that, making sure that all voices are heard. We wanted to create a neutral arena in which people could participate and express their views. So that was the reason for that addition. Was there any comment from board members regarding that?
Before I was on the board, I didn't understand why the board wasn't allowed to reply or comment on, on the public comments. And, and it was kind of frustrating for me before I was on the board. Because it, while it was nice to be able to speak what I wanted to say, I didn't necessarily feel heard because there's no, you know, back and forth. And, and then I learned about the discussion items and the action items and how on the agenda we need to speak, we can only speak about things that are on the agenda because we need to have order and we, we're a well-functioning board. So we don't just talk about whatever we feel like, whenever we feel like talking about it. So I guess, is there, is there a way to in the, when, when President Zweigert or whoever's president reads how public participation goes? Is it, I know we say, you know, that to be prepared that we won't comment back, but oftentimes we do kind of address some of the things that are brought up later on in the meeting. It's just so, unless you're here the whole up later on in the meeting. It's just so, unless you're here the whole time, you don't necessarily realize that, well, maybe we will respond indirectly. And you know, you might, if you leave too soon, you might not be around to hear it. I, I don't know what the best way to put that in a policy is, but...
Maybe that might be best served and I can take some samples to the committee when we meet around more of a pamphlet, instead of people looking at policy language to find the answers to that. Maybe that's more of a pamphlet, like, yeah, what does that look like and that it's on our website or that it's available at the back of the room kind of thing, so that they, they had some of those common questions answered. Maybe that might be the route for that.
I, I think that's a much better idea.
Okay. I'll bring some samples to the committee so we can look at it and give some feedback.
Just one quick comment. You know, I appreciate the part about the clapping and, and the other part I'd like to address, and I think you addressed it, but for the audience at home, it is very hard when you are up here in a room to focus on the speaker when other people in the audience are having a full-on conversation that is disrupting. It is, you're trying to give the speaker all of their attention. So I would ask people who are in the audience to just be respectful of that particular speaker because it is very hard to, to kind of draw your, you know, your attention is being drawn to whatever the conversation is, is going on in the audience. Audience members are free to walk out of the room and have any kind of conversation they would like out in the hallway. But, you know, I'd like to see some kind of attention given to explaining to audience members. You know, be respectful of the people that are here speaking because it's disruptive to the speaker as well. I mean, any of you that have done public speaking, if you're being constantly interrupted or there's some chatter going on behind you, it's very easy to lose your place. And when we're only allowing people three minutes, I would hate to cut someone short because they've lost their place because someone is busy having some other conversation in the audience. So that would just be my, my note.
We'll make sure to be in attention to that. Look at some other models and samples so that we can further that discussion. The next is in the 600 series. You can see, in the 600 series, where again, we use the WASBIE format and coding. So there was a large number of policies in the series that were mislabeled. They had a different number. So you can see in each one in the 600, I've scanned PDFs of everything. So you can see that markup in the 600s you can see. And I tried to make that reference. These were the concepts from this policy over here and the updated language. We spent a lot of time and we'll go through it again. But there's financial management, talking about our overall goals, talking about disclosure, financing, total costs of referendum, the annual operating budget, management of tax exempt, tax advantage obligations, short-term borrowing, our revenues from investments, student fees, grants, financial management, depository of funds, student activity funds, fund balance. Fund balance is one that I want to dig in a little bit because we talked about, when you looked at that, that it would have a range of a 10% to 15%. Where, that's around where we are now. We talked about being at about the 13% mark. But we talked about some future language being embedded in this policy around what's the board intention to grow that and, and what does that look like? We've asked Baird, our financial partner, to give us some forecasting because you heard the auditor and Andy speak at length around our financial rating, those kinds of pieces and just making sure we're operating and that we have goals to attend to capital improvements and how we utilize that. So we were thinking about kind of that future forward language. Was there any feedback from the board around making sure that that was present in that policy or ideas that you would want us to make sure and engage in discussion around?
I do, I do like the idea of having a vision, a goal. And I think the Baird gentleman said it loud and clear when he was here, talking about our audit, that the auditors want to see fund balance grow. And it's, you know, 13%, five years ago might have been fine, but now they want to see more like 18 or, or 22 even. So I think that would maybe go a long way with future audits to show that we do have policy that says, here is our intent. Here's obviously the range that we are comfortable in, but here's where we want to go. You had sent me a sample policy from another district that, that kind of had that in there. I thought it was well-done. And I think it's always a good vision for the, for the district that, you know, we, we need to be financially solid at all times and have focus on, on growing to where our auditors are pushing us.
I'd also wonder if we couldn't have some type of a five-year strategy or even a 10-year strategy showing that. So perhaps that's a presentation, maybe it's not necessarily in the policy, but as a board, you always have to know. I realize that we're always at the mercy of, you know, the budget from the state and I understand the timing of that. But I, I think we have a little bit of insight or knowledge as to this is, you know, typically what, what we see happen. So I'd really like to see us have a five- and a 10-year strategy on what does that look like. And if our goal is to get to 22%, how are we going to get there? And, you know, what it cuts look like or, or, you know, perhaps it's not cuts, maybe it's a way to grow income or whatever we're looking at. But I think we can't get there unless we have a strong plan. So I think a five- and a 10-year plan would be appropriate.
Thank you. That helps the committee with some direction on that. We, we, again, that wasn't present in our previous policy, that kind of growth and future mind. So thank you for that feedback. We also talked about cash management, fraud prevention and reporting, the expense reimbursements, retirement savings plans, employee compensation paid from federal grants during extraordinary circumstances. That was new. That's from WASDA and it's signed on by DPI because when COVID hit and there's federal grants, Head Start's a federal program around continuing to release payments that we, we need to make, that kind of piece. So that's what that language is in relation to. Disbursements of funds, district-issued credit cards, asset management audits, again, disposition, disposal of school property. The significant change there was around 5,000 amount to 10,000. And then we generally do an annual resolution at our annual meeting around disbursement of assets or property. So that was more in align with accounting standards. That's why that amount grew. And then any questions around the 600s, the work that's been done thus far, anything that caught your eye in those that you'd like us to dig into since we have an upcoming meeting to kind of take your feedback and put that in? Great. Moving on to the 700s. That was safe and healthful facilities, the school safety plans. We're inclusive of drills. So you'll see the corresponding kind of, to remove, we map where it goes. So that was consolidating several discrete policies, emergency school closings, and then some old AR, some, some different language that talks about closings, not just for inclement weather, but anytime those closings should occur. Privacy in locker rooms, there was just a minor revision that had been updated recently. So if you look at that, it's just that couple lines in that piece. Use of district equipment by personnel affiliated with the school district, that's a full replacement. Our previous policy had some room for personal use of things and we've restricted that greatly. And then updates of our food service management, the reduced price meals as well as management of the school meal accounts. And then another piece was the use of copyrighted materials. So that's the 700 series. And you can see one dangling 840. We didn't dip our toe into the 800s, but 657, as it was previously labeled, should actually be sponsorship and public gifts to schools and would be an 840. So again, those were the considerations. When you look at what's recommended for removal, we tried to make notes mapping you through where that now sits, that content. It's just that, kind of the number, the significance of the updated language just warrants a clean removal of one and, and starting fresh with the new. And note that 672 is the whole series around purchasing. So we talked about that. There's no drafts brought forward for you this evening. That'll come later. That was an area we really dug into, wanted kind of more of an overarching piece that gave some definition and some structure than with some policies nested underneath around local purchasing bids, et cetera, making sure that was really clear for our board, our staff who carry out those directives under policy and our public. Any questions or any requests for the committee?
What is the best way for the public to review our policies? I know they can go into board docs and look at our agenda, agendas. Can they also view them from the policy?
Yep. So they're right on the website. Yep. So our current ones, whenever there's something in process, I've scanned all the recommended ones. So you can see the three attachments there. I thought it would just be easier right now. So here's the different drafts for future actions. So you can see that in markup language. Because again, we can look at it on our screen in that markup format and they're seeing all the public policies. So I try and scan that and keep that. And then I usually keep a dashboard for us of kind of mapping where those policies go and what the discussion is so that they can see it as well. So all policies are right on the board tab of our website, kind of on the left-hand side there, unless you're looking at a mobile device, which is important to point out. There's a little part under board docs that says policies and you can see the different series there. Now, if you are looking at a mobile device, what appears on that left screen for you on our website, you have to scroll quite a bit farther on a mobile device to, to see that menu and those options. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm sure we'll try and look at, see if there's something different we can do. But mobile devices, just a smidge different there. Great. Then we will take back your feedback to our committee meeting this Friday. Thank you.
As the superintendent talked about a dashboard, as we go through these, there's, there are certain policies that are required. There are certain policies that are highly recommended. And then there are certain policies that we've had maybe for years that, you know, you can see they came in in the 70s or 80s or whatever. They're not recommended. For instance, people might not know this, but if you go to one of our events, that's a school event and you're over 62 years of age, you can get in for free. And that's an awesome thing to offer our community. We actually had a policy on that. We don't really need to have a policy on that. There's not, other districts don't have policies that say that you can get into events for free. We just need to make that known to our community that we want you to come to our events. And if you're 62 or older, you can get in for free. So that one is, is recommended for removal. It's not required. It's not recommended. It's just an old policy we've had. As a, as a committee, we talked about removing it, but publicizing, make, you know, advertising, if you will, that, that that's something we offer, for instance, so.
I know I worked the door on Friday night for the basketball games and it's right there for entrance. Yep. That it says right in there that seniors are, are free. Now that is a little different for if it's, if we're hosting a conference tournament that's overseen by the WIAA or if there's a theater ticket per se, there's a discount there. But again, anytime we're kind of selling tickets or doing that, we'll make sure that that's there and make sure that that's promoted. I've talked with Nancy in communications to try and get that word out.
I will also say a lot of these that are getting updated, we used kind of a combination of what our current policy was and the policy resource guide from WASBIE. In fact, Monty was here when we signed up for that resource guide. We still use it a lot today. And then of course, we look at neighboring districts, you know, superintendent pulls things from her old districts. So it's kind of a combination of how we, we come up with language. We, we go through and try to have consistent language instead of referring to the, the school board as the Board of Education. We've chosen to refer to the board as the school board. So a lot of those are, are, they're in those edits and that's kind of why is we want to make sure we get the numbers right. We want to make sure that we're consistent as much as we possibly can. Obviously, we want to have the required policies in there and anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up around consistency. We are having trouble with board docs. So if you look at those PDFs, you're going to see some weird spacing in some that we don't see in some of our content. We've got kind of a message in. It's not holding some of our spacing changes. So if there's something funny around spacing on PDFs, we are aware of that and everything will be aligned. And, you know, when we're tabbing in some numbered lists, that kind of thing. So you'll notice that in some of the PDFs. But again, we're aware and got to call into board docs to fix that. So don't panic.
If there's no other discussion on, this is the first reading. If there's no other feedback on these, I plan to bring these back for a second reading. If we're all here and unanimous approval, we can approve a lot of these. And if not, then we'll bring them back, bring something back for a third reading. Or if there's something you notice that you want to have us take a look at, obviously bring that up during the second reading. We'll kick it right back to policy committee and review it again. So let us know.
All right. And we'll have another policy committee meeting in between. We'll talk about that when we get to the board calendar. In the meantime, any questions for Joel?
Thanks for all your hard work and the administration for going through these that takes a lot of time. It's important work. We're, we're kind of on track of where our policy review calendar should be. And then when we're done, we kind of start all over and, and do it again. But it's, it's important work. We, obviously are a policy governance board and that's important for the, obviously the board to know, but the community to know. These are the policies that govern our school district. And so it's, it's very important work.
And just...
That myself.
That's okay. Well, I'm going to pat some other people on the back. So in the 600 series, they're largely financial. So Assistant Superintendent Andy Sarnow and Julie Marks, who works in the business office, were instrumental in kind of getting these drafts together, working with the committee. Because again, we want practice that's solid and executed internally as well. So thank you to those.
Great. Well, and thanks, thanks Joel for cheering the committee and moving this along. It's not always the most glamorous work, but like you said, it's very important. And so thank you for that. Moving on, the next discussion item is the mythology anthology text. And Laura Jackson is going to walk us through that. Good evening, Laura.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing this conversation tonight. The high school teaches a course called Classic and Modern Mythology. And they have really used their resources very, very well. And it's time to replace the textbook that is used in the, to go over the Greek mythology. And it's, addresses Greek and Roman mythology. And the previous text, I want to say, it's, it's the same textbook, but earlier versions of it. So the textbook that we're looking at is Mythology Tales, Timeless Tales of Gods and Heroes by Edith Hamilton. There it is. And I could join it up. Our curriculum committee members have had the chance to, to take a look at it. We'll put the text at, on display or for review here at the district office, starting on Wednesday and then going through February 18th. I've confirmed with the public library, they will have it when, as soon as the library opens on February 14th and then have it through the closure of the library, the, the evening closure on the 17th. So for public, we'll have the opportunity to review the text as well. It is important to note that it's a newer version of the text that's currently in use. However, the, our well-worn copies are definitely in need of replacement at the high schools. The, Ms. Caldwell, who is one of the teachers of it, and Haley Doherty, who's another teacher of the course currently, spoke a little bit about that and the use of the text during the curriculum committee. The course generally runs between nine and five sections each year. So it's a, while it's an elective that's offered at 11th and 12th grade, so not a required course, it certainly has been well-attended.
Monty, do you want to share?
Something I remember specifically during the curriculum committee meeting was the teacher, in addition to it being a very popular class, which is, is always good, that the book they're current, currently using is nearly 20 years old and that this book is just, it's, it's not an, it's not a, it's the same book. It's just a new copy. So would you call that a newer edition of, of the same book?
So they've revised the images. There's more images in it. And the images are revised. But if you look within the original publication, original copyright date was 1942. Then the copyright was revised, revised? Would that be the correct terminology? In 69? But then it's just been updated every few years when they've released a new copy. She's talked, she's been teaching it for 19 years. The stories remain consistent in the same language used.
And according to her, who's been teaching this, this class for so long, she says that the, the text really hasn't changed.
Yeah.
So that's, that's assuring to, you know, we're not trying to reinvent anything or do a big 18-year for the class.
Correct. And it's an anthology, so it doesn't have like the lessons or the unit plans or things like that. And it is the story... And it is the story of the myths. And so hence the reason they can remain consistent.
The stories haven't changed.
I guess, Laura, my question would be then, and it would probably make more sense than I, my initial thought was the public viewing at the library being only three days was was a bit short. But if this is really the collection of the stories themselves, the Iliad is still the Iliad. It hasn't been rewritten, and there isn't commentary in here that's augmented by the teacher in the class, then perhaps three days is sufficient because the material is the same thing, it's just a fresh copy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions? All right, this is a discussion item. We're not taking action, obviously. Thank you for informing it. So when will we see this back?
Potentially, you will see it back on February 21st. I'll pull the, any comments that I receive. And I'll have the estimated costs. This text is $30. And then I'll have the estimated cost because we would project out for future numbers so that students have the consistent text. So when a teacher refers to a page number or something, they're all looking at the same text.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that concludes our last discussion items. We're on to future agenda items. So our board meeting calendar. So as we talked about before, Policy Committee is planning a meeting on February 11th, which is this Friday, 4:00 PM here at the Education Service Center. I think we just kind of finalized that on our calendar, so that'll appear on the website tomorrow, right? And we'll post that. Thank you. Then we have a regular board meeting on February 21, 5:30 here at the Education Service Center. March 1st is a curriculum committee meeting, 8:00 AM here at the ESC. And then our two board meetings after that are March 7 and March 21, again, here, Education Service Center at 5:30. Any questions on the calendar? Any items for additional follow-up or communication?
I do have one item. So there was a lot of topics on the five to eight social studies revision, just a couple of general questions for some people listening and myself. What are we required this year to renew those textbooks? If we don't know the answer, I would just...
I can speak to that. So you have a curriculum renewal cycle, and you're always looking at resources. So right now, we want to have something that's consistent. So is there a requirement? No. This board has local control over which standards we adopt, the curriculum and the resources we use. So I think that's why, you know, Erin and Tony and Curriculum Committee didn't bring that piece forward. There's no race to the finish line. They want to do due diligence on process and review. So, but there's no magic date that it's due by anyone else other than us.
In fact, I can add a little bit more to that as well. We typically don't do curriculum reviews over the summertime as well for the, kind of the same reason of, we want to be extremely transparent about what we're doing, what we're looking at. Board meetings are typically, people pay more attention to them during the school year than over the summer. And for that reason, you know, that's why we look at curriculum during the school year.
Okay. Is that a, I'm good with that. I just, the follow-up, even reasoning why the, these are large textbooks. I do have some concerns with some of the comments. Some of the latest textbooks, I'd say are more opinionated than some of the, or some of the newer textbooks are more opinionated by some of, that's just even some of my feelings that I think this is going to be a topic. So I know we have a curriculum committee meeting. I just didn't know whether we are under any timeline and for the general public. So we can take as long as we need, is the general answer that I'm receiving. So that's all.
That's a good clarification. Thank you. Any other items for follow-up or communication? All right, hearing none, we have reached the end of our planned agenda. And so with that, I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. We stand adjourned. Thank you.